All right, folks, we are going to call our workshop meeting to order. So, thank you, thank you. Again, tonight's workshop, for those watching at home, is to discuss two specific components of our new city manager search, if you will. We've hopefully all been spoken to by the folks that are running the city manager search. Hopefully, they've all reached out to you and you've had an opportunity to speak with them and provide input. And so after conversations with folks, they came back to us saying that there were two pieces that they would want clarification on before posting officially, which again is hopeful that we get that out, I believe, by January.
In January.
In January, yeah.
After the holidays.
After the holidays, perfect. And so we, as a group, need to kind of come to an agreement on these two pieces. So the first piece I want to talk about is essentially the compensation that we are looking at and whether we are comfortable with specific amounts. So I'll turn it over to the city manager to kind of introduce what was recommended and talk a bit about the compensation piece.
Yeah, I did send out a—
Make sure your mic's on.
Yeah, it's on. I did send out an email regarding those two components, but I suggested, you know, that certainly anything in this recruitment profile, if you wanted to change or add something added, by all means, we could direct them to do that. But the two components, as the mayor mentioned, was the salary, number one, and what they're advocating based on other searches they've done in the last—over the last year, to put the highest range that you'd be willing to go. So salary range, too, one thing was used that suggested that you might consider $170,000, salary up to $170,000, starting salary commensurate with qualifications. So in other words, if you had a brand-new person who may have only done one small town, it might be, you know, it might be 150, it might be whatever. But if you had somebody who's been a manager for 15 years and you really liked them and they really hit it out of the park, you might be willing to go up to 170. So that was number one. Now, I'll jump to number two, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. Go for it.
They really advocate against residency, but they understand the need to have candidates within a reasonable commuting distance and candidates to be fully engaged with the city, even if they don't live in the city, but to be within a reasonable commute and to be fully engaged with the city. And not, for instance, in some—over history, some managers have, like, lived in another part of the state and got an apartment where they worked. That's nay-nay. And they would sort of ferret that out and pull that out during their interview process to make sure people knew what council expectation was. But of course, you haven't made that decision yet. But if you were to waive the residency under the charter, you can with a vote, then that— they would, you know, certainly work with us to put some language regarding reasonable commuting distance and being fully engaged with the city and, again, have that discussion with candidates. So, and again, those are the two principal things they need to button this up, but anything that you wanted to add or tweak or whatever, certainly turn it back over to you, Your Honor, and members of council.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'd like, just for ease of the workshop, to start with the first piece, kind of make sure we're all in agreement on the salary range, and then move on to the second, which we would, again, as the city manager mentioned, require a vote in order to approve any change to the current residency requirement. So I'd love to hear input on salary, whether you agree with the 170 as the top, whether you'd like to shift, change, whatever it might be. And again, I'll open it up to thoughts. Yes, Counsel Goodwin.
Thank you. Is—I don't think I've seen the report. Has that been issued to a draft? Been issued?
It's in the back of it tonight.
Oh, it is. I saw that. Oh, there it is, okay. All right, I'll take a look. But the 170, to me, seems reasonable. Can just by way of reminder, what is the manager's current salary?
158 or 9, I think, right?
Yeah, it's a little over 157.
Yep.
But if I was continuing to extend another year, you might have considered another 3% to bring you over 160.
Sure. Right. And if you're hiring someone with your experience new to be competitive, it would probably have to be higher, so that seems reasonable.
Counsel Rhythm?
Yeah, thanks. I agree with Counsel Goodwin. I think up to 170 is the exact way to phrase that. I think it allows us some wiggle room in terms of negotiation, but I think puts on the table that we are very open to attracting candidates with experience. I know when I was chatting with Mr. Myers doing part of the work for MRI in the search, we talked about this element at some length, and I asked him what his experience was with other recruitment efforts in the Northeast, but particularly here in New Hampshire. And he said that in a few communities, they started off with a number less than 170 and had a very low interest. The minute they moved it to the 170, they had significant interest. So that seems to be a sweet spot currently. So with his recommendation and given what we know about Manager Bellmore and where we are there, this seems to make sense.
Great, thank you. Counsel Cameron?
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with the 170 starting point, and then based on experience and qualifications, as they had said before, it gives us some wiggle room to attract somebody, so.
Thank you. Counsel Barry?
My only concern with—I understand, like, Mr. Bellmore just stated, like, where he is currently. How many years do you have under your belt?
This is—I'm finishing up on my 20th year.
Okay. So, like, the only concern I have sometimes when you start seeing these ranges where I don't want people coming in thinking they're automatically going to get this high number, right? Where, okay, if you came in with 20 years of experience, then I—you know, so I just want to make sure we're phrasing this correctly, kind of like you said, to make sure that, you know—I get that it opens it up to more candidates, but a lot of people assume right away that they're going to get that high end. And I'm like, well, if you have 20 years, then, okay, then maybe you will, but that's my only concern about how that goes.
I appreciate that, thank you. Other thoughts? Yeah, Counsel Pardikant, Zara?
Exactly, jumping off that point, I was wondering whether or not we want to start with a low range and say, like, range between, you know, 140 or 150 and 170 commensurate with experience, because I thought the same thing. If that's the only number we're putting out there and it's the high number, you almost want to put a lower number just to get that in someone's head and then know that that's the cap and not—I mean, I know if we say up to 170, we're kind of saying you can't get more than that, but I think it's more typical from what I've seen, and this is not my industry of expertise, but usually there's a range, and then you sort of assume, based on years of experience and other things, that you're in there some way. So I am in agreement with that number, and I would also be good with adding a lower point to that range as well, if others thought it made sense.
Thank you. Counsel Pepin?
After all the councils have had a chance—
Oh.
—to vote.
Oh, I see. Appreciate it. Anyone else want to add? Yeah, Counsel Mishu and then—
I'm fine with the up to 170, personally.
Okay. Thank you. City manager?
And I'm not advocating anything, trust me, because I'm not applying, you know?
You don't want it? You want the job?
20 years of experience. It would have the tag, starting salary commensurate with qualifications. They're concerned about a range, because I thought that—I'll be very honest with you, I thought a range, you know, I see that more—
Sorry about that.
It was first day, or no, it was 20.
Don't, makes me hurt. I thought—that—I kind of thought—we was thinking the same thing, but they said a lot of—not a lot, but some candidates think, well, they're only going to do the 140. They're not going to do the 170, you know? So it's reverse psychology, so—but it has to have the tag, starting salary commensurate with experience and qualifications, or however you want to—it said with qualifications.
Yeah, appreciate that. Counsel Goodwin?
I'm assuming that the headhunter here is going to help us sort of do the back-channeling and feel out each candidate. So I definitely hear the—I also normally see a range from, like, sort of the—sort of basic qualified, you get 140, and most qualified up to 170. I get that. But at the end of the day, this council will determine what the pay is for that particular candidate, and if we can't get the votes, then that won't be the candidate or that won't be the salary, and we will be negotiating or helping—or the negotiation will be helped by the consultant, who will have done back-channeling and be able to help us hone in on that salary, so we're not over-offering or under-offering someone that we really want. So I have some comfort that that's sort of what we're hiring those people to help us with.
I would think so as well, yes. Counsel Rhythm?
Yeah, I've seen it both ways in the industry. I think this is a creative way. I think, again, it's just going to require us to be very diligent, and I think working with a consultant can be helpful. I suspect when it gets down to brass tacks at the end of the day and we have a candidate that we're all acquiescing around, that there might be some give and take on some elements of the benefit package. You know, currently, the city manager does have an automobile salary. That'll be an element of a negotiation. So there might be several pieces up in the air that we need to sort of juggle and keep in the air in some form or fashion. So I think I'm comfortable with this. See where it gets us. I think it's forward-leaning. I think it shows us as being very amenable to attracting good candidates. That's what that phraseology says to me.
Yes, Counsel Goodwin.
Sorry, not to drag this out, but that's an excellent point, that this is just one component of their total compensation package. I think probably the most discretionary after that is the car allowance of the vehicle they have. I'm assuming that will be stated in that in the package, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to read it yet. But, yeah, again, it would give us more leverage to potentially, you know, sweeten the pot for someone that we wanted and/or, you know, whatever. It's another—it's another component. This is not the—this is not all this person is getting with their compensation.
City manager?
If they were, like, out of state, for instance, you might have to negotiate some compensation regarding the moving expenses. And if they're in-state and can commute with it and they're within a reasonable distance, if you go that way, then that's money you've saved and can put, you know, that would be part of total compensation package, as well as some managers now don't want New Hampshire state retirement and want a more robust deferred compensation package. So those are things that are going to play into what the salary is and what the benefits are, whether it's car allowance, moving expenses, deferred comp, and that sort of thing, state retirement and that sort of thing. So I don't know if that helps you, as they brought up the whole compensation package.
Other thoughts?
If you're looking for a motion, I'd just move that the council supports a salary range up to $170,000 commensurate with experience and education—
Qualifications.
—qualifications.
So a motion on the table is to say salary range of up to 170, seconded by Counsel Pepin, motion made by Counsel Rhythm. So again, all those in favor, we're just going to do a regular kind of say aye, don't need to do a roll call or anything, all right? So all those in favor just state by saying aye, all those opposed state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, ayes appear to have it. Ayes have it, thank you. All right, that checks off our first one. Second one is, again, just a refresher, to discuss whether we are amenable to overriding our charter to allow for our potential candidate to live outside of the city, as was recommended by our contractors. They prefer that the individual still be within a reasonable distance and fully engaged within all city activities. Counselor Barry and then with them.
So this is one I was happy that came up, because I've thought about this a long time. I'm comfortable saying with the range, but I think we need to have a very set range, because I think without that, in my opinion, it opens up the door quite a bit to what is reasonable, what is not. And I think also—and I could be wrong about this—I would like somebody who can come in an emergency situation and not have, like, on a snowstorm day, that was in a drivable distance. So I wouldn't necessarily say it has to be in New Hampshire, because we are so close to Maine and different things, but I think I would be comfortable instead of saying within a reasonable, I think we need to set that reasonable mileage or something to that effect.
Appreciate that. Counsel Rhythm?
Yeah, I know I've talked with Manager Bellmore about this, and it shows up again in the perspective that MRI provided. And like you, I've thought about it for quite a while. I am one that is not married to a residency requirement for our professional positions. I think that is really going to restrict who can and cannot apply. You know, I think about myself, if you have—or anybody that has kids in a school system, if they're a junior or senior in high school, do you want to uproot them for two years? That's really going to thin your applicant pool in a hurry. So the residency doesn't concern me. I do like the language they've included that wants the manager to be engaged in the community. I kind of like that language. I don't know, so you can define it, but I think it sends a message. But I, like Counsel Barry, agree 100% that reasonable distance, what's reasonable to you is not reasonable to me. So I think we do need to define that in some way, and I think mileage-wise, I don't know if it's road miles or, you know, straight-line miles, but there's different ways to measure that. It would not bother me if we had a manager that lived somewhere between here in Concord, here in Portland, here in, you know, the North Shore of Massachusetts, you know? So I don't know, just throwing it out there for discussion purposes, I was thinking something like 50 miles. That seems like, you know, it's an hour commute. That seems reasonable. I've done it for 30-something years, so.
And we could even set it by time, like, within an hour commute of the city, instead of making it specific to miles. I just want to throw it out for ideas, because, you know, someone who might live in, you know, the backwoods of who-knows-where in New Hampshire might take them an hour and a half, even though they're within the 50—50 miles. But other thoughts? Counsel Pardikant, Zara?
I also am not at all tied to residency. I think I have not a lot of concern either about distance. I think that will sort of sort itself out in terms of who would apply. I mean, people are not really going to want to commute for two hours. I feel like roughly an hour would make sense for me, but, you know, what if somebody lived an hour and 15 minutes away or 60 miles away? So I feel fine not necessarily defining it. What was the—oh, my other question, though, is that I thought—and we've had this conversation over the years a few different times—I thought that it was not in the charter, that it was in the current contract, but the next contract that comes up, I didn't think it was a charter requirement at all.
Do you know, city manager, can I turn it over to you?
I'll try to pull it up. They voted to waive it for me for about a year, so that—for that very reason, my daughter was in high school. But they mandated I move to the city in compliance with the charter, I'm pretty sure. Oh, we have a charter here.
Counsel Rhythm?
Yeah, I thought it was the individual contract, because I know we've had this conversation before.
Let me look. I have it right here. Here she need not—here she— Need not be a resident of the city or stayed at the time of his or her appointment, but may reside out the city—outside the city while in office, only with the approval of the council.
All right.
So it's required unless it's waived by the council, is my interpretation.
Okay.
Wonderfully written, brilliant.
So, I mean, theoretically, if we list it without it required, then we've approved it. But, yeah, I'm just fully in support of not requiring someone to live here, I think. Yeah, people—kids in school, commute. I also am not super concerned about emergency. Our city manager's usually not the emergency management director, that's usually the fire chief, possibly a police chief as backup, so, yeah, I'm fully comfortable with it.
Thank you. Counsel Pepin?
I come from the old school. When I was hired, I told I had to be a city resident, not just mileage-wise, it was city resident, and I guess evidently that got taken to court and got defeated. So you can put a mile restriction on it. My only thought is for that is that I was a big fighter to try to keep firefighters and police somewhere close to the city, because we have small departments. When you have a big fire, it takes more than four people to put the fire out. And you say, wow, you have mutual aid. Well, sometimes if you're in between a storm, northeaster, or hurricane or something coming through, all these other departments get tied up in the same way as you're being tied up. So sometimes it doesn't. I have no problem with letting the restriction go, especially on the city manager. Mine was emergency services, which I know we did change just a little while ago, a little bit, so—but I have no problem with that restriction being left.
Yeah, just anecdotally, I'll tell you what—how it worked for me is, for instance, the city manager used to always be the emergency management director here, but as soon as I became manager and was comfortable with one of my department heads, police or fire being EMD, I assigned it to them. They're the ones on the front line. I've told them, too, if there's a major fire, major police event, you don't have to call me at 2:00 in the morning, because what am I going to do? I'm not going to respond. I don't have a badge and a gun. I don't drive a fire apparatus. Call me at 6:00 in the morning, that's fine. The only time that I've had to respond for an emergency was the Mother's Day storm way back in the day, when our emergency operations center opened up and I was required to get there. I was in Portsmouth having Mother's Day dinner with my wife. So I just—so it just took whatever time it took me to get—wrap things up and get to the emergency operations center. So I don't know if that helps in your understanding of the process, but—and if there's a major snowstorm, I'll find out when I wake up, if the roads are plowed or there's issues with equipment.
All right, Counsel Cameron?
Thank you. I would think that anybody who would be applying for the job, taking a backside on this, that they're going to take into consideration the amount of time, the meetings, everything that's involved with the position, and kind of think about, am I going to be able to do this, adding that travel time or wherever I live into my daily life? So I think lifting or having them live wherever would be fine unless we overrode that at some point, but I think that they're going to take that into consideration themselves before they even apply.
Thank you. I saw Goodwin, Barry, and then Witham.
Thank you. Good conversation. I'm in support of changing it to not be required—residency not being required. I think reasonable distance is fine, it's super vague, and again, I just—I think that vigor is fine. I don't know—I think road mileage, maybe, which gets tricky, because people don't know what that is, so they're going to think you're just drawing a circle and you're not. It could be one way to do it, but hour could be one—you know, time is, I think, slightly better way to do it, but even that's a little subjective, and then it doesn't matter, right? We're going to find out. There's going to be, what, our five candidates, and we're going to be like, where do you live? Are you relocating? And they're going to go, yes, I'm relocating, and I'll plan—I plan to live within 20 minutes or whatever. We will—we will have the opportunity to ask these people what their intention is, and if we have two candidates that were between and one's like, yeah, I live in, you know, Everett, and I'm planning to commute, we're going to be like, oof, you know, that sounds like—that sounds like a stretch. And one's like, oh, I live in—I live in Dover, I live in—I plan to live in Rollinsburg. It's like, okay, well, you know, that decision—that will be part of our decision matrix. So it is subjective. I don't think—I don't think we need to over-engineer it now, it's not going to—I've—I'm afraid that if we get too specific with an hour or whatever miles, it's just going to turn people off to us being nitpicky, when we can nitpick them in person, so.
That's a great point. That's very good. Counsel Barry?
So I'll go back to the reason I was thinking that I would like to get a little more specific, and I understand that this could be nitpicky, but I, again, hadn't had a chance to look at the whole thing, but with my understanding of them being involved in our community, I know a lot of you did say that, oh, they'll take that into account, but we live in a day and age where a lot of teams' meetings happen. They're not here necessarily. I don't know if it's a requirement that they must be here five days a week, four days a week. Again, that's where I feel like I'm getting a little more nitpicky, to say you must be here five days a week to be part of our community, to interact in person, right? So that's where I'm coming of a mindset similar to a hospital, where you have to be within an hour if you're on call or something like that. So I'd be okay with doing a time period, just because I could see where we could have people necessarily in Boston wanting to come for this job, but then they're going to get sick of commuting after some point, or they're going to say, oh, well, there's a snowstorm, I don't want to deal with the traffic. I just want to get a little more ahead of it and assume that they're not thinking that in the back of their head, that, oh, right now it's five days a week, but maybe I can squeeze it down to one eventually after a year or whatever. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with that requirement, for me, just for more information around that.
Appreciate that. Counsel Rhythm and then Goodwin.
Yeah, I appreciate the five days a week. I view city manager as a seven-day-a-week job, potentially. I mean, it's Monday through Friday generally, but, you know, there are weekend things that go on, workshops and all of those sorts of things. And, you know, it's a common model in municipal government right now, and there are several in the state right now, don't ask me to rattle them off, where they live in Connecticut or south, and they have an apartment, you know, one-bedroom studio, that they rent Monday through Friday, and they go home on the weekends. I am not interested in that candidate as our city manager, I'll be frank. You are not invested in the community if you're living that sort of commuting lifestyle. So that, I think, we could vet out during the negotiation process, if you will. I do think that you're right, if we handcuff ourselves too much, it could be troublesome. But I do think that in the back of our minds, we can have this idea that we don't want you to live in so far that you couldn't get here reasonably, right? And we can debate what that is when that time comes. The devil is in the details. I will tell you that one time I hired an individual for a territory in the state, COOS and Grafton Counties. They told me they lived in Littleton. I thought it was excellent. I mean, it's right in the middle of COOS and Grafton Counties, only to find out upon hire that they lived in Littleton, Mass. So the devil's in the details. That employee did not work out, as you might well imagine.
Thank you. We got Counsel Goodwin and then the city manager.
This is a really dumb question, so forgive me. Is there a job description? Does that exist?
Yes.
Okay. And the job description says, in office, attends XYZ meetings. There's not a world in which your job is done remotely for any day of the week?
No, I get—I get text messages and phone calls from counselors, mostly.
Yeah.
Not necessarily staff, but—
Yeah, yeah.
—on weekends, on vacations.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, no. People communicate with you remotely, but I mean, you're required to be in this building five days a week. There's no—there's no way that a candidate would be under the illusion, given the job description, that they could literally phone it in from home one day a week or something like that.
You'd be calling them on the carpet and suspending a firing them.
Right, exactly.
Put them on administrative leave.
So I think the job description helps hedge against some of your concerns, Counsel Barry, in that it is—this is not a job that in any reasonable capacity is one that can be phoned in, which is why I think this requirement is so near and dear to everyone, is because we want someone that is available. And I also don't want someone that's exhausted by their commute. I've done—I've super-commuted before, and it's the worst. You're there and your brain's already half-fried from the traffic, and it's just—I don't want that. I want someone that is fresh and ready to do the job, that knows the local region in our community and that is available. I want it to be wider than Somersworth. I don't know what my limit is. I want it to be a negotiation. What—based on Witham's—Counsel Witham's comments, maybe the term that I think comes in is primary residence in a reasonable commuting distance to kind of hedge against that, like, them being like, oh, I could get, you know, keep my house in Connecticut and have an apartment. We want their primary residence to be a reasonable commute, and the reasonable commute will be a negotiation with our candidates as determined by the council while we're getting those people.
Yeah.
That's so good, you can go home now.
City manager?
Yeah, just again, as mentioned before, MRI will be ferreting out that information and sharing it with you before you nitpick with them. So and as far as not being a reasonable distance, they also convey to governing bodies and to candidates that—to live too far away, you're not going to be able to maintain a healthy personal or family life, and it's just going to burn you out, and it's going to make—for miserable employee for the council and the community.
I honestly don't know how you do it, Bob.
Thanks.
All right. If there's no more discussion, which we can do more, but I do want to say, we do have a Christmas tree lighting at 6:30. do have a Christmas tree lighting at six-thirty, technically. Which is in a minute.
I have a motion.
Before your motion, I would like two motions for this. The first, if, and you can make whatever motion you want, because again, you decide that, not me, but I would recommend that we first have a motion to override the charter to allow for residency outside of the city, so we can kind of really clearly check that box.
If necessary.
If necessary, yeah. And then have a motion on the language we would prefer for this, if that's all right.
Point of order.
Sure.
Based on my understanding of the charter, a vote is not required.
Oh, true. I guess we would cross that bridge.
A vote is required. A vote is required?
I, I think maybe where your head's at is like, technically, we could delay this until.
Until we actually hire a person. Yeah, exactly.
For clarity, I move that the council allow the city manager to live outside the boundaries of the city of Somersworth.
All right, we have a motion in a second by Counselor Barry. Thank you. So again, motion is to allow the city manager to live outside the boundaries of the city of Somersworth, so City Manager, you may move to wherever you'd like there.
You already can, because we amended his contract.
Once we approve it, yeah, true. And again, any quick discussion before we go to a vote? All right, seeing none, again, it will just be a quick roll call, or not roll call vote, just a quick yes or no. So again, if you're in favor of the motion as stated, you will state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.